At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order in accordance with 940 CMR 29.10, Remote Participation Adopted by the Greater Lowell Technical School Committee, April 17, 2014. Committee men O'Hare will be participating at tonight's meeting remotely. Are you there, George?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
All right, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the five of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands. Why nation under God, and visible, will let me.
Are there any members of the -- oh, roll call. We need a roll call.
Yeah.
Mr. Tatzias?
Here.
Mr. Morin?
Yeah.
Mr. O'Hare?
George.
Mr. O'Hare?
George!
Yes, yes, yes.
Mr. Lemay? Mr. Sheehan? Mr. Getchere?
Yeah.
Mr. Bahu? Mr. Gigi?
Here.
Are there any members of the public who have signed in to speak at tonight's meeting? There being no members, we'll move on. Can we please have the report of the student representative Karen Vinal?
The Skills USA National Leadership and Skills Conference, which is being held remotely this year, began on June 7, 2021, and will conclude on June 24, 2021, with a virtual award ceremony. Four students from Greater Lowell qualified to compete this year. Junior Safani Ong from Marketing is competing in customer service. Junior Cassidy Pereira with Model Taylor Moore, both from Cosmetology, are competing in aesthetics. Junior Trina Tran from Medical and senior graduate Samantha Barnes from Cosmetology are representing our school as we present our program as a national model of excellence. Greater Lowell will be hosting an award ceremony watch puddle party on June 24, 2021, for all who would like to support our competitors. More details regarding time and location will be shared in the next few days. Special thanks to marketing instructor Mary Ann McKenna and cosmetology instructor Emily Chaka for their dedication to preparing and coaching our technical competitors. We would also like to thank Juan Coca for ensuring that our competitors had the technology in place in order to compete in this remote format. The senior class hosted a Senior Night to Remember on Friday, May 21, 2021, as an alternative prom event. Over 150 seniors participated in this outdoor evening event that included a catered dinner and a comedy and hypnotist show. In addition, seniors also celebrated their senior week from June 1 to 4, 2021, with a cap decorating event, yearbook distribution, and senior t-shirt distribution, in addition to graduation rehearsal and graduation ceremony. The senior class advisors would like to thank all of our staff, administration, and school committee members who helped make these events a success. The Anime Club has continued their explorations of popular anime movies, followed by discussions regarding the characters and their decisions. They explored how the choices of each character impacted outcomes and how this could apply to everyday life. In reflecting on the year as a whole, the Anime Club advisors described this as a fabulous different year with many lessons learned with technology. The Guided Bible Club has continued to take a deeper look at scripture and apply the lessons to everyday life and events in society. Drama Club celebrated the end of the year with the Google Meet Improv performance on Thursday, June 3, 2021, where students enjoyed performing their skits for each other. They discussed continuing meeting versus via Google Meet over the summer to focus on different acting techniques. Unfortunately, they have not been able to tape their annual production due to extenuating circumstances, but they're looking forward to having something to share at the beginning of the school year. The Math Club finished the year by learning a new number system. Students were completing math problems and puzzles in the Maya Number System in less than 30 minutes. We also learned where math has been used in media and movies throughout history. We also had a pair of students create their own in-depth virtual escape room that includes math, puzzles, and a fantastic story about a parallel dimension. We look forward to the next school year, where we will hopefully be able to compete in more competitions and possibly host some. Peer mentoring has finished the year with a survey about how to improve the program. The freshmen seem to really enjoy the program this year as a way to meet new people during remote and hybrid learning. The mentors are excited to return next year, and some of the freshmen have already expressed their desire to be a mentor next year. The advisors would like to thank the administration and school committee for the opportunity to meet virtually and to remain connected despite the challenges of COVID-19. Student activities are an important part to the school experience, and we are so grateful for the opportunity to bring so many of our programs to our students through virtual and/or remote format. We're looking forward to more normality in the coming school year. We're excited to incorporate some of the new techniques and technology from this year into future programs. And in athletics, both the boys and girls across teams finished up their abbreviated seasons this past week, with both teams returning in solid efforts all season long. Both programs have also had a tremendous number of younger players in the program, so both should be on the rise in future seasons. Tennis turned their usual great season with many team and individual match victories. Unfortunately, this year the league was not able to run the annual CAC championships normally held here at Greater Lowell, but they look forward to the event returning next spring. Track and field has had a strong showing on both the boys' and girls' sides. Similar to tennis, however, the league was not able to hold the annual championship meet this season. Next year, the Griffins look to be one of our top contenders for the title when the meet returns. The Griffin Wrestling Team held the first-ever spring season this year. While it was not a typical season, with no individual tournaments or invitational held, the team was able to lay a solid foundation heading into next winter season. The baseball team has been competitive all season, with wins over league rivals Lowell Catholic, Northeast, Essex Tech, and Greater Lawrence. The Griffins will head into the MIAA sectional tournament to play this weekend. Softball has been cranking out runs on their way to league victories over Lowell Catholic, Greater Lawrence, Essex Tech, and Shaw Sheen. The Lady Griffins will be heading into MIAA sectional tournament to play at the end of this week. And boys volleyball has compiled an impressive 8-1 record during their abbreviated campaign with wins over Essex Tech, Innovation Academy, Greater Lawrence, and Salem. This team will look to keep it rolling as they head into the MIAA tourney at the end of this week.
Nice job, Karen.
Thank you.
Nice job. I'd like to invite you up on behalf of the school committee, on behalf of the administrators, and on behalf of the Greater Lowell Tech team here, for doing a fantastic job in presenting each and every meeting, the student report. You make your parents proud. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck, Karen.
Thank you, Karen. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to stay for the rest of the meeting, or would you like to leave, Karen? It's your choice. Because we haven't seen much of you this year.
All right. I'm gonna sneak out.
I don't blame it.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you. Good luck. Congratulations.
You masked Lowell in the fall for mechanical engineering.
Thank you.
Thanks for all you do here at Greater Lowell Tech.
Of course. Thank you for all the opportunities.
Make us proud.
Taking advantage of them, making everybody here look good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now on to approval of the minutes. May I have a motion?
Second.
And can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Tatzias?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan? Mr. Getchere?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes. On to the report of the treasurer. May I have a motion to waive the reading?
No.
Second. And can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Tatzias?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Getchere?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes. All right, can I have a motion to approve the expenditures? I gotta find that number.
It'd be a separate sheet.
Yeah, I might've misplaced it. I think I have that right here for you, Mr. Chairman. Why, thank you. Hardly I have it in my folder. Ah, thank you. Again, I'd like to have a motion to approve the expenditures of $7,480,012.91. Motion. Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Tatzias?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Getchere?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes. I don't see our general counsel here, so I'm assuming we don't have any reports, and we're gonna turn it over to our superintendent Jill Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So my first item on the agenda, I'd like to inform the committee that Greater Lowell has been awarded a $20,000 grant to support machining and engineering students from the Gene Haas Foundation. The grant award can be used for scholarships, tuition for manufacturing and engineering students, tool awards, NIMS credentialing, and Skills USA CNC machining. So we'd like to thank our Gene Haas Foundation for their support. The next item on the agenda, I'd like to inform the committee that we also have been awarded a Career and Technical Education Partnership Planning Grant in the amount of $15,000. This grant award will be used to support the preparation and planning for the newly-added automotive technology program to our after-doc program, as well as for planning year two for machine and year two for IT in our after-doc partnership with Lowell Public Schools.
Very good.
Next, I'd like to inform the committee about another grant, another Career Technical Education Partnership Implementation Grant in the amount of $98,363. This grant is also towards after-doc programming for full implementation of the new edition of auto technology for the 21-22 school year.
This is all great news.
Yes, it's really great news. So we're really moving forward with after-doc and planning. We'll be meeting with Lowell next week to talk about planning for auto technology and year two for IT and programming.
And it's wonderful that Dusty recognizes all the work that we're doing.
Yes, it's exciting.
And the governor's office is able to go ahead and give us the grant, so this is all moving forward rapidly, and I think it's going to be wonderful for not only this school, but across the state.
And to service the community, yes.
Kudos, kudos to our grant writers, huh?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
The next item, the next item on my agenda is the Cooperative Education Report. As of May 31, we were 32 junior students participating on a cooperative education program, which is 6% of the class of 2022, and a copy of the May Cooperative Education Report is included in your packet. So I'd also like to thank Stacy Bazanson for all the work she did this year with combating the challenges that COVID presented and still getting our students out on co-op. So thank you to Stacy. The next item on my agenda is I'm asking for the committee's approval for engineering instructor Ms. Ewens to attend an out-of-state training in Derry, New Hampshire. The training is called IntelTech Robotics Training. It's organized by IntelTech and provider of two Skills USA equipment sets for automotive manufacturing technology, robotics, and automation technology. The training will be able to provide the instructor with additional skill sets when training students for state and national competition in these Skills USA events. The training is fully grant-funded, therefore there'll be no cost to the district. So I'm asking for your approval for Ms. Ewens to travel to Derry, New Hampshire for this training.
Move to approval. Second? Can we please have a roll call?
Mr. Tatzias?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Getchere?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Sounds like a no-brainer, yes.
So before I move on to the next item on the agenda, which would be to call up our assistant superintendent, I just want to call attention and thank our director of practical nursing and continuing education, as well as our LPN nursing students. They were recently giving a plaque from Lowell General Hospital acknowledging the Practical Nurse Program for their assistance with their vaccination clinics assisting Lowell General Hospital. During the clinics, it was estimated that our students administered 3,500 vaccinations to our community members. So a great thanks to Christine and those LPN students for helping out our community.
Very impressive.
So now I'd like to call our attention to our assistant superintendent-principal, Mr. Michael Barton, to present the proposed 2021-2022 Athletic Handbook and Policies on Head Injuries and Concussions for your approval.
Good, good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mike.
So there's two major changes to the 2021-2022 Athletic Handbook. The first is a rather exciting one, in addition to field hockey, to our fall sports program. It's my understanding that we have a number of students that are interested in this program and have signed up, so we plan on having at least, the very least, a varsity team, hopefully a JV team. We'll know more as we get to September with more students, so that's an exciting addition to our school. Lastly, on the Athletic Handbook, we've added some AEDs to the campus, particularly in the baseball dugout, softball dugout, bathroom areas, as well as the front multi-field use as a precautionary measure. So that is the major two changes to the Athletic Handbook.
Does anybody have any discussion?
I'm for approval.
May I have a motion to approve the Athletic Handbook? And a second? Roll call?
Mr. Tatzias?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Getchere?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
The second topic, the second handbook, is our 2021-2022 Policy on Head Injuries and Concussions. There are no changes to that. It covers, again, the notification process, the identification process, all of the forms are the same, the training requirements are the same, as well as the follow-up procedures. So there are no changes to that document.
Okay. Motion to approve. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Tatzias?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Getchere?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
So next, I'd like to ask Mr. Barton to remain to propose the new student handbook for the 21-22 school year, as well as the school improvement plan.
Great, thank you, Superintendent Davis. So the changes are noted in red. There are, first of all, all of these changes that are here, I believe, after reviewing them, have been presented to the committee already in previous meetings. There are no procedural changes, they're mainly definition changes based on laws, so I can go through them. The first one, obviously, is the reduction in the notice about the COVID pandemic. We covered in some previous meetings about changes to the bullying and harassment laws, as well as the changes to providing adequate documentation, adequate care for homeless students, foster care students, military and children, children and family students. The director of school counseling, Tracy Anconaci, who had come previously and had gone over those changes. Again, the dates here of the early releases, based on the calendar that was approved, the marking period grades are updated here. At one point, I believe it was in the fall, we had had an MCAS update, and I talked about the revisions in the John and Abigail Adams scholarships and the Coplick scholarships. That is in the student handbook, as well as that had been communicated out to all students that, all students in the school, so that they would be aware of the new requirements, so that if they were to try to obtain one of those scholarships, the families are notified about that. Again, there's some changes to the MCAS test through here. One of the changes to this also is to reflect our attendance policy that we had changed as a result of COVID and being remote in terms of the number of days absent, so that will be reflected for co-op eligibility next year. Once next year is over, we'll go back to our previous eligibility requirements. Again, the information about foster care, there's some information about lost and found that's changed, as well as some changes in the field hockey sports. So those are the primary changes that are in the student handbook.
Do you may like to discuss it?
I read it.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the student handbook?
Motion.
And Mr. Lemay seconded it. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Tatzias?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Getchere?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The last document is the School Improvement Plan, which is required each year. The School Improvement Plan is a collaborative document that's generated from the school council, which is made up of students, parents, community members, and faculty members. And then, in working in tandem, there's a committee of teachers, staff members, as well as leadership team members. There are four goals this year. Two of the goals are from last year. We voted to keep the previous two goals because we felt we had additional work to do, because as you know, the school year was certainly an unusual one, and we were focused on remote learning and focused on trying to provide remote learning, so we felt that the goals from the previous year should be kept. So the first goal is actually a new one. It's to create leadership training opportunities for students in academic and technical programs, which will allow them to acquire skills and confidence to lead their peers through a variety of school-based experiences. That was generated from the School Improvement Planning Committee. They were looking for the opportunity to give students opportunities to grow as leaders, so we're offering that to the entire school community. And to speak specifically about it, we had put a call out to all teachers to invite students, 10th and 11th grade students, to work in the summer program this summer, the summer transition program, so those students can be leaders and acquire some training in terms of public speaking, leadership, the definition of leadership, leadership scenarios. And what the ultimate end product will be is they will be working in our summer program during our ninth grade freshman welcome day to lead small groups and tours throughout the building, as well as working with them on scenarios in classrooms regarding our core values. So that's really off and running, that first goal, so that's something that we're kind of excited about. We had a meeting today about that, as a matter of fact, to really give some definition to the opportunity, so the goal will become put in practice right away this summer, in the summer transition program. The second goal is a goal that is actually one that we had been working on prior, and that is to continue to work on grading practices throughout the school district in order to provide students with timelines when they're given assignments, to give them clarity for feedback, to give, to take an examination of grading comments for report cards, to make them parent and student friendly. We had started doing some of that work prior to COVID. It was put on hold because of the work that we all had to do for COVID, so we're resurrecting that goal to give it, to make it actionable. So that's the second, second goal. The third goal is another one that was previously from COVID, prior to COVID, and that is to look at anti-bias or examination of our biases, examinations of our recognition of cultural proficiency within the school district, so that we can have consistent implementation of learning opportunities, rules, and school policies, and clear expectations of student behavior. A number of people have taken a course in anti-bias training through Cornell University. We have a committee that we are continuing with them to do some anti-bias training so that we can recognize some of the biases that might be unknown to us in terms of people for not only race, but gender, disability, and a number of other categories of people. So that is, again, a goal that was prior to COVID that we're going to be continuing to do some work in, so that we can give students an opportunity and faculty members an opportunity, so that we can greater recognize cultural diversity within the school community. Lastly, the fourth goal is, again, one of the four, the second one that we chose to continue, and that is to continue our work with understanding, promoting, and advancing young adult mental health and social and emotional well-being. If there's one thing that came out of COVID that I think received a considerable amount of attention, not only in our school district, but nationally, it's the struggle that young adults have with their emotional and mental health. I think we all know that COVID played a big role in isolation and mental health challenges. We knew as a school district that that was happening prior to COVID, and we had put this goal together, as well as a social-emotional learning committee. And certainly after COVID, many, many, many faculty members came back, and many students, unfortunately, came back recognizing the need for greater attention to mental health, well-being, and social-emotional health. So this goal remains for the School Improvement Plan for this year. So those are the four goals for the School Improvement Plan for this upcoming school year.
Yes, it looks like a lot of effort went into that.
Thank you, it did. But it's a group, it's a team effort, and as I said, there's parents, students, community, bless you.
Thank you.
Parents, students, community members, teachers. It's a wide-ranging document that's put together, and it's exciting that it's, I think it's great that we're continuing goals because we recognize the need for them, but we also are able to kind of put these things into practice right away, so it's good.
Great. Any further discussion? May I have a motion to approve the 2021-2022 School Improvement Plan?
Motion.
Second? Roll call, please.
Mr. Tatzias?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Getchere?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes. Now we're on to the report of the business manager, Mr. Knight. Thank you, Mr. Barton.
Thank you.
Thank you, Knight.
Just a couple of quick items this evening. The first is an update on the school physician's contract. After working with the school nurses and athletics director, we checked in to see how things went with Merrimack Valley Internal Medicine our first year. They both reported that things went very well. They had a record number of school sports physicals taking place during the day, and they began building a nice working relationship, so we were actually offered a contract extension of zero-cost increase, which we jumped at.
That doesn't happen too often, does it?
Not often, but, you know, every now and then we get lucky, so we went for that. The second is a update on regional transportation and the reimbursement fund that we set up last year because we had excess reimbursement coming in above and beyond what we needed to sustain the costs. Again, that looks like that's going to be the case this year. Our first payment for the regional transportation reimbursement was $873,903. Generally, the second payment comes in right around there or above, so our estimated total reimbursement is somewhere around $1,747,806. With our budgeted figure of only $1,452,232, leaves us in excess of about $295,574 in reimbursement that we'll be receiving. So my ask would be that we move this to that transportation reimbursement account that we set up last year. This will help offset the assessment to our member communities for FY '23, because they're already enjoying, or not enjoying, but receiving the offset against next year's budget from the money that was moved last year. So it kind of follows by a year. And generally, the estimates aren't this far off, to be honest. I think in my previous years, I think COVID's got this a little bit screwed up with everyone getting, you know, X amount off their buses, you know, in 50% of the time, in 70% of the time, that type of stuff. So I think the state had a little bit extra in this fund for us this year, so I think this will slowly start to decrease, but in the past, usually, you know, 50, 150,000, maybe above transportation reimbursement. It's just these last couple of years have been well above that.
I have a question, Michael.
Sure.
I don't have my budget book with me, but I was just wondering, did you, do you have the, what was budgeted for the fiscal year versus what we needed to spend?
So if I'm understanding So if I'm, if I'm understanding the question, roughly, regular-day transportation is 2.175, 2,175.
Somewhere in that vicinity?
So we get about 1.7 of that, so 70, that's a tough one, I can't do that off the top of my head, 70-some-odd percent in reimbursement on that, and then the remainder gets assessed to the towns.
Okay, thank you.
So what you're proposing is that we cover, basically, a bank account for next year, and then when we have our assessment, we just sort of offset the extra funds that we have in the account, and that limits how much the communities have to pay on top of what they send, spend for sending our students here.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's a great account to have.
Great job. May I have a motion to approve the moving of the excess revenue in Chapter 71 Transportation Reimbursement received in fiscal year '21 to the Regional Transportation Reimbursement Fund?
Motion.
May I have a second, George? Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Tatzias?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hear?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Getchea?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Knight. Big presentation.
Thank you. Happy summer.
Guess we're on to old business. Is there anything that anybody wants to discuss? Are we going to take off number five after this meeting? What is number five? Card swipe, free, the employee associated, oh, wouldn't that be the file? Yeah, once on the contractor side, that would be. Yeah, can we get that off there?
I think we have to wait till it's approved first.
Well, that's what I meant, I'm just asking if it's going to get off next time, that's all. And once all the groups have approved it, then I think we can take it off. Okay. Thank you.
And I think we can remove number four as well. We did have a committee do a proposal for some solar panels up top, on top of our roof, as well as in our parking lot, that we discussed at length and decided not to move forward. So I believe that that sort of satisfies number four's request.
Do we need a motion to have that removed?
As long as the committee approves, or doesn't deny.
Motion to remove number four. Okay. A second? May I have a roll call?
Mr. Tatzias?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hear?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Getchea?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Anything else under old business? Okay, on to new business, is there anything there? I didn't see any committeeman motions, are there any that were raised that I missed? None? How about a report of any subcommittees, anything along those lines? Then I guess we're on to executive session, and I would need a motion to move into executive section, um, session pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for our negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with the following non-union personnel. Non-union personnel, district treasurer, school business administrator, senior assistant principal, assistant principal, director of human resources, assistant superintendent principal, as well as pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair so declares. Teacher, custodians, security, maintenance, cluster chairpersons, and administrators. Motion. I move the committee move forward on executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Roll call, please.
Mr. Tatzias?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hear?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Getchea?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Will there any, will any votes be needed in open session afterwards?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll be coming back afterwards, hopefully to ratify any contracts. Discussion will take place in open session after executive session. So we're moving into executive session. Please have a roll call.
Mr. Tatzias?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hear?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Getchea?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Here.
Mr. Gigi?
Here. We're now back in regular session, executive, executive session has been closed. May I have a motion to approve the following? A 2.5% salary increase for 2021-2022 for non-contractual employees. 2.5% salary increase for 2021-2022 for the district treasurer. A 2.5% salary increase for the 2021-2022 school business administrator. 2.5% salary increase for 2021-2022 for the senior assistant principal. A 2.5% salary increase for 2021-2022 for the assistant principal. 2.5% salary increase for 2021-2022 for the director of human resources. A one-year contract for the Cluster Chairpersons Association for July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022 with a 2.5% salary increase. A three-year contract for the Cluster Chairpersons Association for July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2025 with a 2.5% salary increase for the first two years and a 2% increase for the third year. A three-year contract for the custodial personnel for July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2024 with a 2.5% salary increase for each of the three years. A three-year contract for the maintenance personnel for July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2024 with a 2.5% salary increase for each of the three years. A three-year contract for the security personnel for July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2024 with a 2.5% salary increase for each of the three years. May I have a second? May I have a first?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Tatzias?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hear?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Getchea?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
All right, for the next motion that I'm going to ask for, Curtis and George cannot participate. May I have a motion for a three-year contract for the Greater Lowell Teachers Organization for July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2024 with a 2.5% salary increase for each of the three years, to approve the addition of Chapter 74, Early Childhood Education Instructor, a new position? May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
May I have the call of the roll, and Curtis and George are not allowed to participate.
Mr. Tatzias?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Getchea?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes. On to the next motion for which Lee Getchner cannot participate. I'm asking for a motion for a one-year contract for the Greater Lowell Administrators Organization for July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022 with a 2.5% salary increase. Also, for a three-year contract for the Greater Lowell Administrators Organization for July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2025 with a 2.5% salary increase for the first two years and a 2% increase for the third year. May I have a motion?
Move.
May I have a second?
Second.
And Mr. Getchner cannot participate. May I have a roll call?
Mr. Tatzias?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hear?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes. And for our last motion, I would be asking for a motion for a 2.5% salary increase for 2021 through 2022 for the assistant superintendent principal. In addition, I'd be asking for a 2.5% salary increase for 2021 through 2022 for the superintendent at 2.5%. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Tatzias?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hear?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Getchea?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes. May I have a motion to adjourn at this time?
So before you adjourn, can I say a few words?
Yes, you may, I'm sorry. Strike that motion.
So I just want to take a moment to thank the committee for their support this year navigating the challenges presented by the pandemic. I appreciate everyone's support, I know it has not been easy, but I feel like we really worked together and we did the best that we could for our students and our school community, so I just want to appreciate, I just want to thank you for your support. I'd also like to take, take a moment to thank the Assistant Superintendent Principal, the administrators, and the entire staff for their hard work and adaptability to adjusting their practices and work duties during the, their pandemic. It was a big, a big challenge for everyone, but again, I think working together, we were able to overcome that challenge and provide our students with an education, whether that be remote or hybrid, so I'm appreciative for, for the staff. I also like to thank the parents for their patient support and flexibility throughout the pandemic. I know it wasn't easy, but without them and, and their support, we wouldn't be able to get through this. And I'd also like to say to the students out there, we're proud of you and your perseverance through the pandemic. I know it hasn't been easy for, for our students to adapt to remote learning and the different changes in their learning, but I think their perseverance showed through, and I'm proud for them engaging the way they should. I want to wish everybody a, a wonderful summer and a safe summer, and look forward to seeing everybody in the fall when we return to some normalcy here at Greater Lowell Technical High School, so thank you, thank you, everyone.
Thank you also.
Very well said. Thank you, thank you for everything you've done from, everybody from you right on down. It takes a team.